...these young men are. So, the first awards we're going to give out, okay? We'll call everyone up, okay? Jamari Atkinson. All right. Chimeka. He's not here. Chimeka's not here, unfortunately. Chimeka is going to the University of Pennsylvania. We're really proud. His athletic accomplishments as well as his academic accomplishments. And we'll get his plaque. All right. Niall Stonie. All right. And the anchor, all right, Noah Grant.
Amazing.
All right. We're not done. It's just like on the warm-up. We have the longest warm-up out of anyone. I make them run more than any other school. That's okay. All right. All right. We were not only sectional champions in that one event, but we were overall New Jersey state champions in a four by 100 meter relay. That's, you know, one time everybody runs 100 meters. And, you know, we did it pretty fast. We did it fast enough where we set a Middlesex County record. And we had one of the faster times in New Jersey in that event. So, it's special, all right, to, you know, win in overall group four state championship. And when I look back at the records, there's only, since the inception of the school, there's been about, about a dozen. And that's dating back to like 1957, okay? So, these gentlemen did it, you know, we had two of them this year. And so, we're really, really excited and really proud of their accomplishment. So, when I call up these gentlemen again, they are New Jersey group four state champions in the four by 100 meter relay. Okay? Come on up sophomore Devonte Hee. Okay. Niall Stonie. Okay. And Noah Grant. All right. And Jamari Atkinson. All right. Then you guys. All right. One more time, guys. Hey, no one you go in this way. I'm too slow to be in the middle of that. Okay. We have one more. All right. It's very difficult to become an individual state champion in anything, okay? We actually have two of them in our room today, okay? All right. Dr. Gray's daughter, okay, is also a group four state champion. All right. But we have one of our own at Piscataway. And it's always special, all right? And I can tell you that this young man really earned it, as did all the other mentionees that I just mentioned. But this person put in an exceptional amount of time. I can't tell you, every day, he was the first one at school, in the weight room, waiting for me to open the door for him before classes even started. And he really was driven to become the best sprinter in group four in New Jersey. And to see his, the look on his face after he won, when he got his medal, that was just special. And I'm really, really happy and really proud. He set a new, and also when he was a state champion, he ran the fastest time out of any Middlesex County board, not man, really. 10.3 seconds. Okay? All right. That's pretty fast. Noah Grant, come on up. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm not going to come in front of the podium. We know I'm loud enough that you can hear me clearly. One, I want to congratulate the track team, especially the five gentlemen who are here tonight. I know all of you, or I've at least seen all of you throughout the years of growing up here in Piscataway at different variety of events, sports and so forth, or just out in the community. To tell you how proud I am and the rest of the board who are sitting here with me is an understatement. Because of your dedication, your commitment, you have put Piscataway on the map. So, like it has been stated, when they hear Peeway, they already know we coming for them and which our mission is to take them down. And you have shown them you will take them down and you did take them down. The records that you set, the personal one, the group one, the team ones, unbelievable. But most importantly, yourself, you did it. You made the commitment to give it your all, to let people know your name, not just Piscataway, but you as an individual. I'm incredibly proud of you. But most importantly, I want you guys to know, we will remember you like you will remember us. But if there's anything we can do to help you, to assist you, please reach out to the district. Get Rob Harmer, get Chris, heck, hit me. Y'all all know me through my kids. We will be there for you in a blink of an eye. But most importantly, stay committed to what you're doing. Keep doing the training that you're doing, even though I know everybody's not going to stay with track. Make that commitment to life, to commit to give your best in whatever you do, whenever you do it and however you do it. But once again, we want to congratulate you. We want to thank the parents for coming out tonight, for having them here, for acknowledging them with us, for allowing us to educate your students in the Piscataway School District because you didn't have to choose us, but you did. And once again, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your summer. Enjoy your evening and good luck in the future. Okay. Now I want to make a motion to adjourn.
Executive session.
Uh, we're going. Be it resolved that the board adjourns to executive session for the purpose of review and discussion of personnel agenda, delegation, HIB monthly reports and other matters pursuant to law.
The board re-convenes to public session, have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now back in public session. Good evening, good evening everyone. We have no student presentations tonight, so we're going to start off with my president's report. I hope that all of our families and staff have been taking the time to enjoy their summer and recharge their batteries as we prepare for an exciting 25-26 school year. At the Piscataway Summer Camp, we'll be wrapping up another successful summer program. Our children in grade pre-K through eight have had a great fun summer that included arts, movies, pool time, plus wonderful trips to the Camden Aquarium, Big Kahuna Water Park, Clementine Park and Splash World, Donison Farms, Dorney Park, Field Station Dinosaurs, Sandy Hook and more. We are thrilled that the Community Education Office is able to offer this great experience to our students each year. As we draw closer to the start of another school year, our athletes are hitting the fields for their first practice in anticipation of successful fall sports season. The Piscataway High School football team has been training, have had their training camp this week, and their first game is just around the corner on Friday, February the 29th, home against Edison. The Chiefs hope to build on last season's successful year with another margin to the playoffs. Middle school football begins practice on Tuesday to follow up last year's undefeated championship season. The Super Chiefs marching band also has held camp this week with their annual preview show on Friday. Most of the rest of the Piscataway High School sports teams have began practices next week. Middle school sports will get on the way on September the 3rd. Best of luck to all of our coaches and students as they work hard to get ready for the fall. Now we'll have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we were very fortunate, we honored our graduating athletes prior to the formal meeting. And they might represent Piscataway's best, but I have to tell you, as your current interim superintendent, I'm so glad you're all part of my story, as I told the kids at graduation. To the citizens of Piscataway, as your current superintendent, I offer you the following statement. You've got one heck of a district here. And I'm not just some person. Yeah, that's right. And I'm not just talking to the parents, I'm talking to every person in this district. You should be very proud of the work that you've all done, you can see it on a daily basis. Like Ms. Cherry, I hope you're all having a good, healthy summer. We've had a very focused recess. I know you think superintendents just sit in the office and eat bonbons all day, well, we don't. Our educational community offers the citizens of Piscataway authentic work to support our children and our families. We start with our summer programs, which are all child-centered. Thank you, Dr. Gray. I visited the pre-Ks today, and the facilities are really beautiful, absolutely beautiful. This summer, here are district initiatives. This summer, facilities. Mr. Olivera and the maintenance crew, our buildings are immaculate. I was at the high school today, and the construction that's going on, and you'll get a formal update when school's starting. Curriculum revision. Curriculum revisions, Baskerville and the supervisors, really well done. Not only that, but this year, we are starting our year, and on the agenda, we have policy 2365, which addresses artificial intelligence. And I'm happy to report that our district now has an A.I. team, a district committee, to support our children and our teachers in the integration of artificial intelligence to support and influence learning. We also got new Promethean boards, so to the citizens of Piscataway, thank you for that. And we also have technology upgrades. I have to mention the work of our teachers. This summer, with the new literacy program coming in next year, we have offered our teachers six additional workshops. Ms. Albanese, one of our E.L.A. supervisor, under the leadership of Dr. Baskerville, has offered professional learning to our teachers across the district. In addition to that, we've had all professional learning workshops, the collaborative classroom. Thank you, Ms. Edmondson. So our district is very engaged. You can all sit there, or people who don't want to know, sit there and don't listen, but I'm telling you, unfortunately, have a little bit too much experience, which doesn't make me feel great. Well, it does, I earned it. Yes. You have an effective district. Our teachers are engaged, and to the teachers, I want to thank you very much for your interest. Tonight, agenda policy 2563, John Bartruff and Christopher Ervedondo have started and completed a formal action plan to address the integration of artificial intelligence. I had a six-hour meeting with them as they developed it. I don't drink, but that night when I went home, I did take a swig of lemon Jell-O. I'm just getting over it, I'm just getting over it. Really, but what a beautiful plan. We had a principals' meeting yesterday, that's our final meeting before the start of school, and I'm happy to report to the parents who have taken such good care of their children our summer, we're ready. Send them in, we're ready. Our first day of school for the staff will be August 28th, and all buildings have activities planned for the beginning of the school year. The Genesis Program for the high school students opens on Friday. Code of Conduct, thank you, Dr. Lippman. Lot- Lotman. I get up at a quarter to five, so this is it.
It's all worse.
And we have a new code of conduct that will be approved tonight, has revisions that represent input from all our administrators, and that's going to be good for our kids, and you aligned it with artificial intelligence. In addition to that, we are going to welcome 35 new teachers. You have a very modest turnover rate, and don't look at the 35 and go, what's happening? Life happens. The new teacher residency, Dr. Baskerville and the supervisors, will be offered to our teachers on the 25th and 26th of August. And we have two new items in the teacher residency. We have invited veteran teachers to offer our teachers good, practical information, and in addition to that, our principals will be offering information to our new teachers also. And I'd like to thank the association and Mr. Roberto for paying for the lunches. But don't worry, David, he'll be asking you for a receipt for tax.
Ever heard of him.
I know. Building and grounds, you're doing one heck of a job. Tonight, because it's the start of the school year, we don't have another meeting, I wanted to make sure everybody in our district was acknowledged. If I left you out, I'm sorry, but I have to tell you, and I'm not going to cheer up when I say it, the first week, I told you I needed you more than you needed me. And I'm so glad Piscataway is part of the story of Dr. Roberto. I mean that sincerely, so thank you very much.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Nancy Sogato Cohen.
Oh, here it is.
Thank you. Be it resolved, the following motions identified as items A through Q be approved as presented.
Second. Sorry, let's backtrack for a second. Under superintendent's report, the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment?
Yes, oh, where is he, Dr. Baskerville? Here he comes.
Oh, yeah, we weren't there yet, sorry. That was me, I'll get back to them. Oh, this, that's this.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to, I had two presentations for tonight, and I decided to just put them all together into one, so I can go from one right into the other, so just expedite the presentation on tonight. We want to start with the curriculum updates for this year. These things went through, all of our curriculum went through our curriculum committee on the 4th of August, and so we were in depth with them on that time. But I just want to bring your, bring your attention to a couple of things. We actually had 10 curricular disciplines that we updated over the summer, and we went into great detail with each and one of, every one of them. We had like about 60 slides in the curriculum committee meeting, and those of you with all of the supervisors that were there, and they're on pages, I believe, 12 and 13, in your agenda to be approved on tonight. But I just wanted to just highlight a couple of things. One of the things I want to look at is engineering, engineering 6 to 8. One of the things that we're trying to do is bridge the gap between the high school and the middle school with engineering. If you look at 6 to 8 engineering, we have a Grade 8 project, Lead the Way. So what we actually did in Project Lead the Way is that we expanded the robotics program in Project Lead the Way in Grade 8 by infusing coding, and Python coding into Grade 8. Instead of being, seeing it in the high school, we pushed it down to Grade 8 as well, and it actually pushes our robotics program forward. Literacy, you know, we are launching, and before I go any further, I want to thank all of our teachers, administrators, our teachers have done a phenomenal job. We have done the workshop model in Piscataway for about 18 years, and so after 18 years of using the Readers Writers Workshop model, we are actually segueing into the Science of Reading, starting in September. We will be launching the Science of Reading in September with McGraw-Hill as our primary curricular resource. K through 5 will be using Open Court by McGraw-Hill, and 6 through 8 will be using Study Sync. We also chose McGraw-Hill because we can actually take the Study Sync, and we have the capacity to just spread Study Sync into the high school as well. So it can actually go from 6 to 12, we have that capacity to use that. For literacy in the K-5 Open Court, we have certain things that we added, such as teaching points daily, we have resources, anchor text, that'll be resourced, that'll be anchored every lesson. One thing about the K to 5 Open Court resource is that lesson planning, and a lesson is a little different using Open Court, because we are traditionally look at a lesson, it's like Monday, one lesson, lesson two the next day. Well, a lesson is actually over a period of five days, where we take a bunch of objectives and work those objectives over a five-day period. So we are very excited about that. The teachers have done a phenomenal job, and we will be opening with Open Court in our literacy classrooms. K to 5, 6 through 8, we're using Study Sync, also from McGraw-Hill. Study Sync has about 5,000 titles at our disposal, that students can use those titles on their devices. Another thing about Study Sync, that it is heavy in vocabulary, and actually teaching vocabulary within context, within the various genres of literature as well. There are common assessments and unit vocabulary in Study Sync, and we're going to actually be looking at how we're going to push Study Sync for reading comprehension up into the high school as well. Tomorrow's teachers, we, it's also aligned with King University's Dual Enrollment Program, where we have teachers, students who are looking at becoming teachers, when they eventually go on, and we're looking at exploring that avenue and giving them opportunities to see what the teaching field is actually like. Basically, our curriculum rewrites and updates and vigil and performance, there was nothing introduced new there, and I will go over the common themes that were there in a minute. Our K through 5 digital literacy map was updated to involve what is called digital sitensory. So what we're looking at in K to 5 digital literacy is we're preparing our elementary schools for artificial intelligence by actually getting them under certain things and exploring certain things that come under basically, for example, knowing how to use artificial intelligence to do concept webs, and to do pre-reading strategies, and things of that nature. And so we are having the research skills and how to use tools responsibly. So we want to start teaching students in the elementary schools with digital sitensory, how to use digital tools, but how to use them responsibly. AP Chinese is a new course that we're taking. A lot of the students wanted to use Chinese in high school, so we're moving to AP Chinese. We also, under Practical Arts, we have three new classes, Applied Nutrition, we have that, we have Marketing, which will be a capstone course in the Business Academy, and Financial Accounting, which is also a capstone course. These courses are also under the Dual Enrollment Program of Syracuse University, and so we have a, an agreement with them, where these classes can be taken there for dual enrollment as well. Common themes that run across all of our writing of curriculum, we have standards, standards alignment, all of Piscataway's curriculum is currently aligned to the state standards. So we are up to date with all of our curriculum, the integration of 21st century learning skills, critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creativity, tech integration, and being able to work in teams. These things are altered throughout all of our curriculum rewrites and update. Integrated accommodations and modifications for special ed students, ELLs, GNT, students at risk, and 504 plans. In our curriculum template, we actually have, and we, as a part of our CUSAC compliance and our CUSAC audit, what we did was we changed the template that we used to put curriculum on. So if you look at our templates, you will see a different template, where we break those things out, and you can actually see where certain things are taking place in each unit. And so you'll see certain things, like accommodations for diverse learners, accommodations and modifications for special educations, ELLs, GNT, students at risk, and 504. Special lessons for Amistad, the Holocaust, LGBTQ, and AAPI. We've also managed to do those things, and if you look, our crosswalk is updated. Where you could actually see where we do those things is we have a district crosswalk, and we break it down and show, you can see that under our curriculum instruction tab, we actually did that. We are continuing to expand on our assessments, including formative summative. McGraw-Hill has a diagnostic test, we gave the diagnostic test before school closed to all K through 5 students. So K through 5, which will now be grades 1 through 6, so all of the K through 5 students prior to the close of school did the McGraw-Hill diagnostic, and we're using that as baseline data for where we go in and start teaching. The teachers already have access to that information. We have benchmark, unit assessments, we have the COGAT. We introduced the COGAT last year, and now the COGAT has become a part of our normal practice. When we implemented COGAT last year, there were four students in our district that were in, gifted and talented in the elementary schools that had IEPs and were multilingual learners. Two had IEPs, two MLs. The two with IEPs had IEPs for speech only, so they, clearly, they did not have a learning disability. So we had speech-only IEPs, and we had ELLs. We instituted the COGAT, and we found 52 students who were able, as a result of the COGAT, to be able to be included in the GNT program. And not only were they included in the GNT program, that they did extremely well, and we rolled them over, and they're continued in the GNT program, and we made COGAT part of our practice. We had, we even had a student who was in a behavior BD class, and the student in the BD class did extremely well as well. And so we want to thank Ms. Edmondson for working with us as well, with the students with IEPs, and we had to identify them. We were able to make sure that we offer gifted education to every child that deserved it, and we found 52 additional kids just by using the COGAT. We have digital resources for teachers and students, interdisciplinary connections, E.L.A. math, science, and social studies. We have those broken out, where you can see where those things are taught in other disciplines. You see a lot of math, for example, in E.L.A. in our schedules. We also know that you can teach through informational text, science, and social studies in the E.L.A. curriculum, so we do that. Career education, computer science, design, thinking, climate change, technology integration, pacing guidelines that focus on key concepts and skills. One of the major things that we've done over the summer also is adjust pacing. We found out, and we will get into that in a few minutes, just by the GPA, that there were certain skills that if we taught them earlier, when we look at evidence statements and so forth, that if we taught certain things earlier, and give the students a longer time to master it, when they get to the GPA, they will score better on that. So we actually changed the way we move some things around with the pacing guidelines and focus on key. Vertical articulation, we look at course sequencing within grade bands, as well as crossing over grade bands, for example, you look at it in 4-5, as well as 5-6, look at it in 6-8, as well as 8 going to 9 into the high school. Inquiry-based and project-based learning, we're big on that. Inclusion of multi-tier systems of support, MTSS. For a long time, we focused on academic interventions, but now we're looking at behavior, social, emotional, and academic interventions through MTSS. Real-world connections and applications, differentiation of content process and product, social awareness and connections with current events. Really, you see that a lot at the high school, where we are able to tackle current events and things that can be quite controversial, and they're doing a great way with that in the high school. Addition of relevant resource material, including e-text. We're moving as much as possible, thanks to our business administrator for that as well, from actually getting tech, textbooks, we're moving more to tech books with five-year licensing plans, where we can also be able to download upgrades to those books, so that we're not running into a thing where things become obsolete in a year or two, so we are able to stay current. And alignment with College Board expectations, example AP exams at the Piscataway High School. Before I go on to the NJGPA, that is our curriculum updates. Any questions or comments about the curriculum rewrites and updates?
Dr. Baskerville, really, good work. That's a very, that's a very large amount of, you know, points that you hit there, so bravo.
But I really-
Are you sure you missed anything?
Congratulations to your supervisors.
I want to say publicly that we have to acknowledge the supervisors and the teachers, because they, I really want to make sure that we acknowledge, we have some great teachers, they are experts at what they do, and we really want to acknowledge the work that they've done with this curriculum as well. NJGPA, New Jersey Graduate Proficiency Assessment, they came out with some new information on yesterday, so I had to rush and try to make sure I included that in this, but we can get through this, thank to the high schools about that too. Thanks Kelly, thanks Teresa. Graduation assessment requirements, we see on May the 3rd, the State Board of Education approved the graduation graded cut scores for E.L.A. and math for the GPA. The cut scores used to be higher, but then they took them down, if you may remember. The E.L.A. components are aligned to Grade 10 standards, the mathematics component aligned to Algebra I and Geometry standards. First pathway, achieving a passing score on the New Jersey Graduate Proficiency Assessment is the first pathway to being graduation-ready. If after completing the New Jersey NJGPA, a student does not demonstrate proficiency on the E.L.A. or math section, the student may retake the NJGPA in the following summer or fall. Cut scores are approved by the NJ State Board of Education on May 3rd of 2023, and they have remained the same since then. And the cut score to be graduate proficiency, is to be graduation-ready, is at or above 725 for E.L.A. and at or above 725 for math. The fall administration will be October the 6th through October 10th, makeup October the 14th through October the 17th, and these are the current requirements for the class of 2026. I believe on yesterday, they also announced that they will be doing an adaptive GPA on yesterday, I believe it was, where they're going to do an adaptive test as a field test, but more information about that will be forthcoming. Second pathway, demonstrate proficiency in E.L.A. and or math by meeting the designated cut score on one of the assessments on the Menu Substitute Competency Test. The pathway is only available to students who completed the NJGPA in Grade 11. So if you have to take a second pathway because you did not, you must- So if you have to take a second pathway because you did not, you must take the GPA first before you're able to be able to use the second pathway. These are the pathways that could be used, Accuplacer and so forth. These are the dates that we have Accuplacer in place in the district, the ELA Accuplacer and the math, and these will be taking place the 19th and the 20th, and the math will be on the 20th and the 27th. And the third pathway, portfolio appeals in ELA and math in grades 12, October the 8th to May the 1st. Here we go. So these are the students who took the NJGPA. As you can see, our numbers have somewhere hovered around the same, and it's good that we're looking at data that's over the years. In a way, it's longitudinal, but then it's not, because you're not necessarily comparing the same kids, we're just looking at numbers from year to year, but we look at where these numbers are falling. So we noticed, all results in 2025, we had 1,020 grade 11 students and 51 grade 12 students. The grade 12 students are students who basically came into the district, are new to the district, and just a sprinkle of those who were taking it again, but those 51 students are students who are not with us, for the most part, that's where they are. Want to look at how we actually went. If you look at 2023, we were at 81%. If you look at 2024 in ELA, we were at 83%, but then this year, we dropped from 83% to 79.2, that's a minus of 4.1 percentage. I'm going to come back to that and show you, we've identified some of the reasons why we think that we dropped there. I've had many conversations with Mr. Baldassano and with the content specialists, so we're going to look at that, and I'm going to show you what we came up with. Also, if you look at math, we'll see that even though we did very well in math, so we basically statistically stayed where we were. So we was at 58, then went to 58, and then we just went up by 0.7% to 59. All results, we went down this year statistically around the same, minus 1.7. Here's a visual just for you to basically get a good visual of where that is. Grade 11 students, 79.2%. If you see, in 2025, we went down from 82 to 79.2. Here, we also, which means that it was the first time in a minute that we were actually lower than the state average. And so every year, we celebrate the fact that we are above the state average, but this year, we came in slightly lower statistically. I know Dr. Lottman is a statistician as well, but we're somewhere pretty close to where we need to be. But still, you know, we hate to go down, especially, and we always pride ourselves at being at least above the state mean. So here, we see we went down a slight bit below the state. And then over in math, we see that we were at 59%, we were above the state slightly there as well, but we were above the state slightly in math, but we went below, we dropped in ELA. If you look at graduation-ready here, we'll see that we went to 77.6% this year. That's total students. We went down 5.6 points. And I'm going to show you where we are looking at where we found that that's coming from. And all results were down 67.9, down 3%, so I'm going to show you where we went down with that. When we mention pathways, we also want to make sure that you understand one thing about the NJGPA and the other pathways. So roughly, with the math GPA, tested 512 kids, in ELA, 511. According to the GPA, roughly 59.6% of the students were graduation-ready as per the score on the GPA, and literacy, 79.1. But when you factor in the students who had already have another pathway, currently, we are at, as of the 12th, we were at 70.3% that are graduation-ready and 84.1% in ELA that are graduation-ready, when you factor in the alternate pathways along with the GPA. Here's where we are, subgroup and race. With Hispanic population, we dropped from 80% to 66%. African-American population, we dropped from 75 to 68. Hispanic, we went from 80 to 66%. But it has to be noted that we have had a large influx of Spanish speakers into the district and at the high school. As a matter of fact, we ended up getting a conditional waiver, bilingual waiver, because of the amount of Spanish-speaking students. So we had to, we received a conditional waiver, we had to, we're going to implement a part-time bilingual program in the lower grades starting in September as part of the action plan and as part of the remediation for the amount of Spanish speakers that we have in the district. At the high school, we found that that's where we saw a lot of the numbers that fell down with the Hispanic population are students who are in the endorsed classes in the high school. What we're doing at the high school as well is that we're not calling them an in-class support person because they're not, they don't have an IEP, but we have a, in the academic classes where we have Spanish in the ESL endorsed classes, we have an additional person working with those students inside those classes as well to give them the extra support that they need. That's the intervention that's taking place there, because we see that that is a situation right there. And you can see, if we pull that 66% and you look at those students and you correlate the students and pull them, you can see exactly where the numbers fell at across the board. And that's just a good visual, another visual just showing you what we already had. Those are just visuals. Gender. Our ladies have historically done a little better on GPA than the males have done, but you notice that the ladies even dropped this year slightly as well from 87 to 84, and the males dropped from 79 to 72%. In math, we stayed around the same place, and we, for females and males, we stayed around the same place in math. That's a visual, so you can get a chance to just see how that looks. And that's in your packet. Right here, we celebrate our ELLs. Look at the top line where we have our English language learners, which we've been really focusing a lot on them. You can see we had a 4% increase. The Ls dropped from 23 to 24, but then they picked back up in 2025. So you see over here on the corner, you'll see right there where we picked up from 2024. Also, I want to bring your attention to our special education students. Our sped students went from 35 to 39. So they improved as well. We see improvement there. Also, look here. At the graduation for our Ls for all students, you see we had 41 here. Last year, we were at 36. So we improved there. Sped, all students. Last year, we were at 12. This year, we were at 21. And Ls again, all results, last year at 43, this year at 47. So it shows that the effort that we're putting with our special education students and our L population, they're working. These are also within your packet. Piscataway High School Plan of Action, all students registered to a Schoology course where all pathway assessment information will be located. Sessions to administer to Accuplacer will be held. Accuplacer is an assessment by the College Board. It is the most powerful and available tool to help colleges assess student readiness to introductory credit-bearing courses. Have the math, the English study guides posted in Schoology, and students can take multiple times. This information is listed and can be found in the Schoology account. This is our Accuplacer schedule at Piscataway High School, Tuesday the 19th from 9 to 12 in English, Wednesday, August the 20th, 9 to 12 for math and English, and Tuesday, August the 27th, 9 to 12 for math. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Well, maybe you said I may have missed it. So specifically, what are we doing with the Hispanic students population to help them via current curriculum, high school programs, to help them become graduation?
We have other district personnel, like for our Spanish speakers, that are in with the ESL-endorsed teachers as well, that are working with the students, so they're like, and their content vocabulary, so in the math and science, and especially the math and literacy classes, so they have people in those classrooms, extra help working with those students in those rooms.
Dr. Baskerville, just to piggyback on Dr. Connors, obviously, it's a huge red flag that two of our biggest populations minorities are failing, you know, and-
They're not failing.
They dropped.
They dropped.
They're dropping. I understand. But in our eyes, as a board-
Yes, absolutely.
Anything less than excellent is not happening.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right? So I appreciate all the work that was put in to your plans this summer, but I also want to ask specifically, is there some sort of guideline or some sort of pathway for specifically the English as a second language Hispanic learners to be proficient by a certain number of years? Is there sort of like a rubric that the teachers will follow, or, I'm not sure, because I'm not an educator. If you could educate me on what we're going to do, that would be done.
So one of the things that we realize is that many times, educational initiatives work from the bottom up. So we have a new ELA curriculum. So you're not going to see the benefit of the ELA curriculum until maybe two years, three years, because when those students start moving up to the high school from the middle school, you'll be able to see it there. And so, but you will be able to see some actual growth in that. The biggest challenge is to be able to identify who these students are. So when we identify who they are-
Right.
And we actually start disaggregating data. Now, I want you to, I gave you something, and I'm not going to put it up on the screen, but I gave you another packet, I want you to look at this.
The smaller one, yeah.
Smaller one. You'll see on that first page, the data analyzes students' performance on the NJGPA is based on a couple of things, on the math class they took in 11th grade. It shows the percentage of students who passed in each course, highlighting trends across the course levels. For example, students in AP and honors classes consistently achieve high pass rates while students in skills or support classes such as ESL, sped, and essentials of algebra had lower pass scores. This provides a clear snapshot of how 11th grade math placement correlates with NJGPA outcomes. So we're looking at those type of things as well. We have also analyzed evidence statements and made minor adjustments to our essentials of algebra pacing. So some of the things inherently have to be adjusted with curriculum. So we are constantly looking at where we adjust curriculum to make sure, especially in skills-based classes, where we actually adjust that curriculum. So if you see here on that first page, it shows you the number of students that were tested, in which class, and the percentage of them that actually passed. So if you notice Algebra I, two courses below grade level, two students were tested, zero passed. So if you could just look at the correlation of the class that they're in and the pass rate. Second thing that we noticed is that students have a general understanding of NJGPA as a graduation requirement. They also know that there are other pathways to graduate. Students who have taken the PSAT or the SAT understand that their scores on these tests may have already provided them a pathway to graduation. So of the 510 students who sat for the NJGPA, 331 or 64.9% had already met the graduation requirement through their PSAT or SAT.
So they didn't have like an incentive.
They didn't have an incentive. They had test apathy. Among the 305 students who passed the NJGPA, 276 or 90.4% had already met the requirement beforehand. For the 205 students who did not pass the NJGPA, 55 or 26, 55 students at 26.8 had already met the requirement via PSAT and SAT. And you see that breakdown there. That's the second thing. Thirdly, summary of the data show how students' projected scores relate to the amount of time they spend on the actual test itself. Projected scores can rise by the more time you actually spend taking the test. So if you see some students, and we have here, broken down from students who actually spent 10 minutes on the test versus those who actually spent 90 minutes. A student who spent 10 minutes on his test, roughly the aggregate score was 707, where a student who spent 90 minutes on the test was 756. So it's just a lot of different variables and things that we look at to try to get the scores up.
Just the last piece of that, do we feel that it's, obviously, is language barrier one of the main reasons?
There's some-
Or is it more, it's more fleshed out?
If I may, I also think as the district refines the way it utilizes data, and you mentioned it tonight, you have other factors, your mobility rate. How long does a child need to be in the district before it hits proficiency? In addition to that, this year, we worked with our administrative team to refine the data teams-
Yes.
-in each school. You know, formally, you know, we did, I feel the district addressed that.
Yes.
And another aspect of it is, when you and I talked about it, I'm holding on to the mobility rate, because I really feel that is a factor-
That is a major factor.
-that influences some success. And the other item is the formalization of your formative assessments and a standard district assessment period, you know, and the district's moving toward that, you know, toward it. So there are a lot of variables. We just got the scores went yesterday.
No, we've had the scores for a minute.
We had the scores with the new data.
One of the things, we have data on the mobilization rate on the NJSLA. And so we have data that just proves without doubt that students who are with us for two and three years score higher than the students who come into the district and are in the district only one year.
That's right.
When we also look at the students who scored less, two things pop out just glaringly. Number one, the mobility rate, and two, the language barrier. So there are many students who score that because of the language barrier. We're also looking at how we continue to do and service our ELL. One of the things that we looked at when we were trying to find the right program to do the Science of Reading, is that one of the vendors had a ESL track that was separate from the main track, and a lot of school districts went to using that, but we decided not to do that-
That's not the right way.
Because we didn't think that that was the right way to go.
No, that's just going to slow them down.
And then that would just make it worse.
Yeah.
And so we decided not to go that route, but we would just, so we would be better off identifying the students, looking at program and the way we deliver instruction, do formative assessment data, and do analyzation of data to see where those data points are and how we can improve and meet those students where they need to be met.
And the other point I think we need to point out is are children eligible for services? That, those achievements were consistent, so kudos to our staff. Our classification rate isn't high, but the services are comprehensive. And this year, with our training on refining collaborative teaching model, that can only enhance it. enhance it for next year. But that's, the students eligible for services, that was solid, Dr. Basswell.
We also, well, we're always careful to make sure that we are either at or above where the state is. And even though we don't like falling within our own metric, we still can celebrate the fact that we were above the state in most of the other measures as well. And so we look at that and we, like I said, this education is still trying to dig out from the COVID, we're beyond COVID now, but we're still trying to dig out and the residue is still there, but we can consistently say that we have outperformed state means. And so we continue to hang our hat there and try to do what we need to do to continue to move forward within our own internal practices.
Thank you, Dr. Basswell. Now Personnel and Labor Relations, Nancy Sargato Cowan.
Hi, I'm back. Be resolved that the following motions identified as A through Q be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Secretary, can you take the roll call?
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargato Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Good for you.
Um, I'm now going to read a walk-in resolution, item R, in Personnel and Labor Relations. Be resolved that Mr. Ernst and Young, Ernst and Glover be appointed as Superintendent of Schools effective November first, 2025, or soon thereafter, as he may be released from his current employer through June thirtieth of 2030, in accordance with the terms of employment contract approved by the Executive County Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Thank you. Um, madam, can you take the roll call? I'm sorry, I'm so nervous.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargato Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
I abstain.
Motion carries.
Um, before we move, yeah, we can do that. Okay, now that we've all clapped, I want to just make a small but not too lengthy statement. I want to share tonight some important comments. I want to take a moment to sincerely acknowledge and thank all of our non-conflicted board members, Ms. Loretta Rivers, Mr. Presham Patel, Dr. Gail Nelson, myself, Dr. Tom Connors, Brenda Smith, Ms. Ainika Stafford, and Mr. Courtney King. We need to give these people a big hand as well. I want to thank, I want to thank all of our non-conflicted board members because over the course of this process, over four to five months, we have grown together not only as colleagues, but as stronger, as a more united team. As you know, we are all unpaid volunteers and elected officials, that's right. And in the state of New Jersey, we are the only non-paid elected officials dedicated and committed to show you how commendable this job is. We are empowered, we are ignited, we are, this process has really brought home what it is to be a board member, honestly. So tonight, I'm deeply honored to announce our new superintendent, Mr. Ernest Glover. He was one of thirty-six applicants who sought his position. We are confident that we have selected the very best and brightest leader for our district. During the three to four hours of in-depth conversations that we had with Mr. Glover, it became clear that we were meeting an exceptional educator, leader. He is deeply child-centered and data-driven, with experience as a teacher, administrator, and superintendent. What stood out most was his intelligence, his kindness, his thoughtfulness, mindfulness. He knows his strengths, leads with integrity, and understands how to inspire his staff to achieve their highest potential.
Very nice.
I'm not done, but there's more. I said it was going to be short, remember? Mr. Glover is a dynamic and visionary leader with a clear strategic vision for moving our district to the next level of excellence. I am both honored and thrilled to welcome him as our new superintendent, and I'm confident that under his leadership, our students, staff, and community will thrive.
Yeah.
And, um...
Nancy.
Oh, I'm sorry, hi. And this is our president, you haven't had a chance to meet her just yet. This is Ms. Chantel Cherry.
It is a pleasure to meet you, Mr. Glover. Congratulations on behalf of the Piscataway School Board. And being I was conflicted, so I didn't get to participate in any of this, we want to welcome you. Just a little gift bag of a token of appreciation and some things you may be able to use going forward. I am looking forward to working with you. And to Hillside, we thank you for our newest addition to Piscataway. We want y'all to know we appreciate all the grooming that he was able to do in your district, and now he's coming to Piscataway and we're going to take it to the next level.
That's right. Yes, yes.
He's always going to be available to you, just a phone call away, because I know you all have established bonds and friendships. It will last a lifetime, but once again, we're sorry we had to take him from you, but it's our time to jump into the fields of education with him and see where we're going and what all we will accomplish together.
Yes.
But in all seriousness, I really appreciate and want to thank you and welcome over to Hillside.
All right, and then one more time, just one more photo and we're done.
Have a guy?
Stay for a little longer.
I was hoping it'd be over.
Would you like to say any words? Mr. Glover, would you like to say any words? The floor is all yours.
Quick.
Okay, yes.
You can be as quick as I can. Forget we have cake. Oh, yes, we have cake.
Oh, we do? I love cake.
I'm definitely going to be brief because I understand the time and I understand folks want to get back to their family. First and foremost, Madam President, Madam Vice President, to all the board members, to the team that I will be joining in the near future, School Business Administrator, definitely our board attorney, to the staff, say thank you for allowing me to lead this district. I'm excited and I hope that collaboratively, we will take the district to that level where everyone is knocking on our doors. You talk about the mobility rate, but we have to push people away because we know how great we are. I'm with you one hundred percent. We don't fail, we get better, and we make others chase us.
That's right.
I have to thank my family, my wife. I've been doing this for over thirty years, and I know there's many times that I have missed a few opportunities to spend with my family. So I have to acknowledge the fact that they allow me to stand up here and continue to do this work. So I love you and I thank you very much. To my family and my supporters. This is not just Hillside, this is folks that have rocked with me since I came to New Jersey, so you'll see faces. There's many more, and I bring, I bring traveling members with us because I believe that they want to be a part of this process as well. And I leave this with the students and the families, and I know my back is turned and maybe we'll adjust it at some point in time. To the families and the students of this community, I assure you that you will have every ounce of my energy and my attention. I assure you that there will not be a day that I go home and not think about how I can do things better. And I assure you that I will not embarrass the name of Piscataway and this district. Thank you, and I look forward to joining you in the near future.
Um, anyone who's interested in partaking in some cake, it is across the hall.
A short break. We're going to join you.
Go right across, you can get some cake, mill about, and we will be back. Um, do we need to take a motion to make, take a break? I need a motion to take a break.
Motion.
Second?
All in favor. All right. We're on a brief recess.
Get Dr. Nelson some cake.
She said, oh, I always like...
I love cake.
Dr. Grace, stop it. I love cake.
That's going to be in the, in the recording of the...
I'm excited that it's a child.
You're going to have to listen when I get home.
And it's weird. Why somebody like Don? Okay, okay, I love cake. That's a, that's a, that's a... I'm getting tired of it all quick now because I never liked it as a child.
She's trying to make up...
I never liked it as a child. I never liked it. Yeah, they got some cookies. But if they don't have them, Ted, you can have one of my cookies. We got those.
We got those, uh...
What they have for dinner tonight?
We have a salad.
I'm telling you both.
Okay.
The curriculum committee met on Monday, August the 4th to discuss AI action plan, opt-out option for specific health and physical education lessons, and summer curriculum updates. AI action plan was discussed by Dr. Baskerville. The district has constructed an artificial intelligence action plan. The plan addresses various structures and systems throughout the district, as well as items such as policies, formation of committees, generative AI parent guardian, professional learning sessions, AI educational tools, and more. Science of reading, professional development slash parent workshops was discussed by Dr. Baskerville. Over the summer, teachers received workshops on new language arts curriculum. The district will hold workshops for parents broken down by grade bands. McRae Hill and District SAPP will provide support and information to families with this new curriculum resource. Opt-out process for specific comprehensive health and PE lessons was discussed by Dr. B. A letter will be shared with families in September following successful use in previous years. The lesson will take place in February, March to keep up with developmental needs for our students. Curriculum design approval. Department supervisors shared summer curriculum updates and reviews. Korean technical education, which is done by Robin Kay. Applied nutrition, new dual pathway course geared towards careers in culinary arts. Honest business organization and management, dual credit courses with Middlesex County College. Entrepreneur, 2.5 semester course was updated with resources. With TEP 2 culminates in student-led capstone, students will work towards OSHA-10 workplace safety certification. MARKET 2, new dual credit course with Syracuse University. Financial accounting, new dual course with Syracuse University. Digital literacy, K-5, was done by Mr. Aravando. K-5 digital literacy aligned to template and acknowledged technological inter-curriculum update. Language arts was done by Ms. Albanese and Mr. Hood. K-5 curriculum updates rooted in open court reading, 6-8 curriculum, identified common assessment, finalizing finalized pacing, focused on teaching of vocabulary. Tomorrow's teachers is a new course for future teachers. Advanced film studies, second level course revitalized. Exploring graphic novels, half-year elective, up to date with new ELA standards and curriculum connections. Math 1 through 6 was done by Ms. Dayton. Math 6 updated to 2023 NJSLA standards and district-approved format. Accelerated Math 6 revised based on student-based data slash vertical alignment. Math 7 through 12 was done by Mr. Rubeliski. The following have been updated to align with approved district templates with NJSLA. AP Calculus AB, AP Calculus BC, Applied Statistics, College Algebra, Discrete Math, Honest Calculus, Pre-Calculus, Topics in Pre-Calculus, AP Statistics consolidated into five units. Algebra 8 slash Honest Algebra 1, increased rigor, pacing alignment. Science was done by Mr. Celebrry and Ms. Pitchard. K-3 Science updated to template and pacing revisions within Mystery Science. PHS Science courses updated for template in NJSLA, Real World Scenarios, Historical Content. Biology, Physical Science, Chemistry, Physics. Engineering was done by Mr. Celebrry, 6 through 8 Engineering aligned with templates in 8th grade. Plithem coding. Social Studies 9 through 12 was done by Ms. Albanese and Mr. Knox. AP US History aligned with State and College Board requirements, new capstone research project. Visual and Performing Arts was done by Ms. Delackey. All curric- update to align with district template and NJSLA. Visual Arts, K-3. General Music, K-5. Visual Arts, 4 to 5. Band, 4, 5. Orchestra, 4, 5. Creative Dramatics, PHS. Orchestra, PHS. Drawing and Painting, 1, PHS. Drawing and Painting, 2, PHS. AP Drawing and Painting, 1 and 2, PHS. Photo Design, 1, PHS. Photo Design, 2, PHS. AP 2D Design, 1 and 2, PHS. Ceramics and Sculpture, 1, PHS. Ceramics and Sculpture, 2, PHS. AP 3D Design, PHS. Graphic Design, 1, PHS. Graphic Design, 2, PHS. Rural Language was done by Ms. Gonisha. AP Chinese aligned with College Board Expectations is a new course. ESL Grade 1 aligned with the Science of Reading. ESL Grade 2 aligned with the Science of Reading. Bilingual grades 1 through 5, new this year, aligned with NJSLA and ESL bilingual code. Progress monitored in both languages. And that concluded the curriculum report. It was an intense meeting. It was a lot of information.
Wow.
But we learned a lot. There were a lot of necessary updates and improvement for growth, and I'm looking forward to this school year. Next, we have Policy and Legislative, Ms. Smith.
The Policy and Legislative Committee met on Wednesday, August the 6th, 2025 to discuss an AI action plan filming in schools and the new policy proposals and more. Dr. Roberto, Dr. Mr. Bertruff, and Mr. Iravando briefed the committee on the administrative's administration's development of an artificial intelligence action plan to guide staff and students in their use of this technology. Mr. Bertruff confirmed that the plan will address all of the topics suggested in Strauss Hesme's Proposed Policy 2365, which the committee approved to be placed on the board agenda for first reading. The committee discussed a concern raised, a concern raised by Ms. Cherry about the district policies to address outside organizations and individuals, including township officials, recording school events for broadcast without district authorization. Mr. Rubin will draft policy language for the committee's consideration at a future meeting. The committee reviewed and approved to be placed on the board agenda for first reading several additional policies and one regulation, all intended to implement recent legislation. Policy 1636.01, notification of promotion, new job, and transfer opportunities. Policy 5339.01, student-son protection. Policy and Regulation 6111, special education Medicaid initiatives program. Mr. Rubin briefed the committee on recent legislation requiring child study teams to provide certain information to parents prior to IEP meetings. The law does not, does not take effect until 26, 27 school year, but the Department of Education has urged districts to use the 2025, 2026 school year to prepare for full implementation, and that's...
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Approval of minutes, Ms. Rivers?
It has been resolved that the following minutes be approved as submitted. This is meeting July 10, 2025, and executive session July 10, 2025.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments from the floor. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and school matters of community interest. In support of this position, the law established a period of public comments at every board meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes' duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. The board may require that individuals register to speak prior to the beginning of the meeting. Participants may submit written material in support of their position. All statements and questions shall be directed to the presiding officer, and no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect for dignity and privacy rights of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law of governing declamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of legal ramifications of their comment, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak this evening? With that being said, I see no one stepping forward. Can I have a motion to close public session? Got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments from the floor now close. Fiscal Plan and Operations, Dr. Connors?
Be resolved following motions identified as items A through P be approved as presented.
Ms. Secretary, can you take a vote?
Can I just make a comment on item G? That's the authorization about the gym floor flooding.
Yes, Dr. Connors.
Got it. I'm gonna go through P, right? Okay.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Baskerville?
I was gonna work on my closet some.
I'm telling you both.
Okay, back in recess. Okay.
Yes.
Go on. Uh, committee reports.
Goodbye.
The curriculum committee met on Monday, August the fourth
Halloween.
To discuss AI action plan, opt-out option for specific health and physical education lessons and summer curriculum updates. AI action plan was discussed by Dr. Baskerville. The district has constructed an artificial intelligence action plan. The plan addresses various structures and systems throughout the district as well as items such as policies, formation of committees, generative AI parent guardian, professional learning sessions, AI educational tools and more. Science of reading, professional development slash parent workshops was discussed by Dr. Baskerville. Over the summer, teachers receive workshops on new language arts curriculum. The district will hold workshops for parents broken down by grade bands. McRae Hill and district staff will provide support and information to families with this new curriculum resource. Opt-out process for specific comprehensive health and PE lessons was discussed by Dr. B. A letter will be shared with families in September following successful use in previous years. The lesson will take place in February, March to keep up with developmental needs for our students. Curriculum design approval. Department supervisors shared summer curriculum updates and reviews. Career and technical education, which is done by Robin Kay. Applied nutrition, new dual pathway course geared towards careers in culinary arts. Honest business organization and management, dual credit courses with Middlesex County College. Entrepreneur, 2.5 semester course was updated with resources. With Tech Two culminates in student-led capstone, students will work towards OSHA-10 workplace safety certification. Market Two, new dual credit course with Syracuse University. Financial accounting, new dual course with Syracuse University. Digital literacy K-5 was done by Mr. Aravando. K-5 digital literacy aligned to template and acknowledged technological inter-curriculum update. Language arts was done by Ms. Albanese and Mr. Hood. K-5 curriculum updates rooted in open court reading, six to eight curriculum, identified common assessment, finalizing finalized pacing focused on teaching of vocabulary. Tomorrow's teachers is a new course for future teachers. Advanced film studies, second level course revitalized. Exploring graphic novels, half-year elective, up to date with new ELA standards and curriculum connections. Math one through six was done by Ms. Dayton. Math six updated to 2023 NJSLA standards and district approved format. Accelerated math six revised based on student-based data slash vertical alignment. Math seven through 12 was done by Mr. Rubeliski. The following have been updated to align with approved district templates with NJSLA. AP calculus AB, AP calculus BC, applied statistics, college algebra, discrete math, honest calculus, pre-calculus topics and pre-calculus AP statistics consolidated into five units. Algebra eight slash honest algebra one, increased rigor pacing alignment. Science was done by Mr. Celebri and Ms. Pitchard. K-3 science updated to template and pacing revisions within mystery science. PHS science courses updated for template in NJSLA, real-world scenarios, historical content. Biology, physical science, chemistry, physics. Engineering was done by Mr. Celebri, six through eight engineering aligned with templates in eighth grade reflects plithem quoting. Social studies nine through 12 was done by Ms. Albanese and Mr. Knox. AP US history aligned with state and college board requirements, new capstone research project. Visual and performing arts was done by Ms. Delackey. All correct update to align with district template and NJSLA. Visual arts K-3, general music K-5, visual arts four to five, band four, five, orchestra four, five. Creative dramatics, PHS, orchestra, PHS, drawing and painting one, PHS, drawing and painting two, PHS. AP drawing and painting one and two, PHS, photo design one, PHS, photo design two, PHS. AP 2D design one and two, PHS, ceramics and sculpture one, PHS, ceramics and sculpture two, PHS. AP 3D design, PHS, graphic design one, PHS, graphic design two, PHS. Rural language was done by Ms. Gonisha. AP Chinese aligned with college board expectations is a new course. ESL grade one aligned with the science of reading. ESL grade two aligned with the science of reading. Bilingual grades one through five, new this year aligned with NJSLA and ESL bilingual code. Progress monitored in both languages. And that concluded the curriculum report. Um, it was an intense meeting. It was a lot of information.
Wow.
But we learned a lot. There were a lot of necessary updates and improvement for growth and I'm looking forward to this school year. Next, we have policy and legislative, Ms. Smith.
The policy and legislative committee met on Wednesday, August the sixth, 2025 to discuss an AI action plan filming in schools and the new policy proposals and more. Dr. Roberto, Dr. Mr. Bertruff and Mr. Iravando briefed the committee on the administrative's administration's development of an artificial intelligence action plan to guide staff and students in their use of this technology. Mr. Bertruff confirmed that the plan will address all of the topics suggested in Strauss Hesme's proposed policy 2365, which the committee approved to be placed on the board agenda for a first reading. The committee discussed a concern rate, a concern raised by Ms. Cherry about the district policies to address outside organizations and individuals, including township officials, uh, recording school events for broadcast without specific organization. Mr. Rubin will draft policy language for the committee's consideration at a future meeting. The committee reviewed and approved to be placed on the board agenda for first reading several additional policies and one regulation, all intended to implement recent legislation. Policy sixteen, uh, 1636.01, notification of promotion, new job and transfer opportunities. Trent, uh, policy 5339.01, student son protection. Policy and regulation 6111, special education Medicaid initiatives program. Mr. Rubin briefed the committee on recent legislation requiring child study teams to provide certain information to parents prior to IEP meetings. The law does not, does not take effect until 26, 27 school year, but the Department of Education uh, has cert, has urged districts to use the 2025, 2026 school year to prepare for full implemented implementation. And that's, um.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Approval of minutes, Ms. Rivers.
Uh, yes, we thought that the following minutes be approved as submitted. Business meeting July 10th, 2025 and executive session July 10th, 2025.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments from the floor. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and school matters of community interest. In support of this position, the law established a period of public comments at every board meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must state their name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes duration, but an individual may speak a second time after all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. The board may require that individuals register to speak prior to the beginning of the meeting. Participants may submit written material in support of their position. All statements in our questions shall be directed to the presiding officer and no participant may address or question board members individually. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect for dignity and privacy rights of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law governing declamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of legal ramifications of their comment, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak this evening? With that being said, I see no one stepping forward. Can I have a motion to close public session?
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments from the floor now closed. Fiscal planning and operations, Dr. Connors.
Be resolved, following motions identified as items A through P be approved as presented.
Mrs. Secretary, can you take the role?
Can I, can I just make a comment on item G? That's the authorization about the gym floor and flooding.
Yes, Dr. Connors.
Got it. I'm gonna go through P, right? Okay.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargato Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Ms. Policy? Page nine.
Be resolved that the following motion identified as item A be approved as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Secretary, can you take the role?
Dr. Nelson?
Madam President, I have one. Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, item A includes reading, um, first reading on, on these policies and that policy 2365, acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence. I recommend to my fellow board members that, um, and to the policy committee when they meet on September 4th, that they look at a sample resolution on artificial intelligence. Um, that is a template that, uh, this will be a resolution that I would recommend we put on the September 11th business meeting after the policy committee looks at it. That basically states that the board has a belief and understands the potentials, benefits to teaching and learning, uh, carefully implemented AI technologies and what can have an effect on students and educators. So this way, we've put together an action plan, we've put together a policy, but I think having the resolution puts out a belief statement of what we believe in and I'm gonna recommend it to the policy committee and so they can bring it to us. And it's actually a template from the National Educational NEA Association.
Madam President, a point of order. We had moved up our September policy committee meeting to August um, to accommodate a request by the administration to consider the AI plan. Um, in the meantime, Strauss Hesme has come out with a whole new stack of policies and, um, I'm considering leaving that September meeting date in place just to keep us on track.
I think that would be advisable.
So if Mr. Con, if Dr. Connors can send that over, um, I will include that on our agenda.
You're gonna give Mr. Rubin the physical copy?
For the next policy meeting is when?
Do you want, do you want electronic copy? Electronic copy?
Please, yes. As indicated on the, on the, on the meeting list, at the end of the meeting, we'll be meeting on September 4th as scheduled.
Okay, and then the board meets September 11th.
Correct.
Got it.
I'll, I'll forward to him.
Are you on?
So one of us is on the table.
Okay. Just communicate together to make sure he gets.
That's all.
Probably get it twice.
Are you two a team?
Yeah.
Oh, they are.
Yeah, that's his mentor.
I missed that.
That's his mentor.
It's the Wonder Twins.
That's why we, that's why we move them apart.
No, this time I got a Wonder Twins.
All right, let's, let's, let's get back together. We gotta get it.
I get for being here so long.
Everybody's overtired.
For being here for so long, you know.
We're overtired.
Too much cake. Okay, hey, hey, let's get back and let's finish this up.
I'll take the role on.
Mrs. Ms. The secretary is taking the role.
The motion for the policy resolution. So, Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargato Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Curriculum, Mr. Patel?
Be resolved that the following motions identified as item A through H be approved as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Secretary, can you take the role?
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargato Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Pupil services, Dr. Nelson? Be it resolved that the following motions identified as items A through C be approved as presented. Second. Mrs. Secretary, can you take the role?
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargato Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Administrative auxiliary, Ms. Stafford? Be resolved that the following motions identified as items A through D be approved as presented.
Motion.
Second. Mrs. Secretary, can you take the role?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Rivers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargato Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Okay, now we do have another one, Ms. Stafford. Uh, this is the resolution approving board members to attend the workshop. So if you just read the be it resolved on page 18 and each of you can answer in the affirmative and I will automatically abstain you from your individual name. But you can just say yes and, and I will automatically abstain you from your own name.
Oh, we don't have to say the same thing? Okay, good.
Which one do you want me to read?
Letter E.
E?
Page 18, right above letter E, be it resolved.
Yes. Be it resolved that the following motion identified as E be approved as presented.
Second?
Can I have a s-
Second.
Mrs. Secretary, can you take the role?
Ms. Smith?
No.
I'm sorry?
What?
Say yes.
Yes.
Ms. Stafford?
Yes.
Dr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Patel?
Yes.
Rivers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sargato Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
That motion carries, you're all approved to attend the workshop.
All business.
Uh, Madam Chair, then one item of all business that I want to mention is that we will be continuing with our master board certification this fall and I will be notifying you of the first date. You just need five and a half credits for by November of 2026 and we will continue with our learning of school governance.
Anyone else with all business?
Not yet.
I think this might be all business. When I read your minutes from the policy committee, I'm not interjecting, but I think you're talking about policy 9700. Yes. On the first item. No, the second item.
That where Ms. Cherry was in the notes? Yeah, that's 9700.
I think it's 9700. I could be wrong, but.
No, it is.
Well, it's a special interest. It's called special interest 9700.
It's the one about, um, people coming to our public.
Well, we were, well.
In our discussion.
There, we, it was unclear whether 9700 was really addressing what the underlying problem really was. I mean, that's what prompted, the request to discuss that policy is what got the discussion going, but the discussion really had very little to do with what policy 9700 really talked about. It may actually be tucked into a different policy. But 9700 was what prompted the discussion to begin with.
All right, good. I just want to support the board.
Yep.
Okay, anyone with new business?
I have new business. Um, I just want to, um, mention that going forward, when, um, we have the new superintendent starting, I would like to, um, have a half-day retreat for ourselves and the new superintendent and administrators. Um, you know, obviously this will be going into the new year, January, um, since we will give the new superintendent time to acclimate, but I think that it is important as we continue to, um, you know, build our relationship with our new, um, leader that, that we all will be able to spend some time together and, you know, have a bit of a retreat. So, um, it will be not, you know, probably be here and more details to come and so on and so forth, but I do want to put it out there that this is something that I'm going to be working on, um, going forward.
Thank you.
Right.
Thanks.
All right, anybody else with new business?
Madam President, I have one item and that is, um, as your New Jersey School Boards Association delegate assembly voting, uh, member is that the next delegate assembly from New Jersey School Boards is November 22nd. Um, the cutoff for if we as a board, if we want to, on any board, uh, submit a resolution, it would be by October 3rd.
Thank you, Dr. Connors. Anyone else? Can I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
You did good work for all of you.
All right. Woo-hoo. Nine oh five, not that guys.